Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is June the 16th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. This is our regular meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God. With this.
That's liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the roll. Now we're starting on my right.
Dominic here, present.
Ryan Condon, present.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Duco, alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Bear Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay, now let's see. We have one, two, three, four. We're expecting another.
Two.
Two, Dominic.
General members, so we don't need to see it anymore. Are we expecting Leon?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's go on to general public participation. Number three, are there any members of the public here? There aren't. Any online that would like to comment or question or present information to the commission, please raise your hand. Any members of the public online interested in participating, please raise your hand. Seeing none, move along to public hearings. We have one public hearing, RAA 2022-R2, File 1022E. This is our proposal from the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Five text amendments. You're ahead.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held 2022. Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the following text amendments proposed by the commission. Number one, Article Six, Excavation Filling Application, Section 6.4 and 6.4.8A, Completion and Permit Extensions. Number two, Article Six, Supplemental Regulations, Section 6.1.13E, Design Standards. Number three, Article Six, Supplemental Regulations, Section 6.3.1C, Sign Permits. Number four, Article Six, Supplemental Regulations, Section 6.3.3D2, Conditions for Variances. Number five, Article Three, Residential Districts, Section 3.8, New Interior Lots. Number six, Article Three, Subdivision Design Standards, Section 3-304, Design of Lots, New Interior Lots, on Thursday, June 16th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, via hybrid meeting with access by phone and in person at Monroe Town Hall Council Chambers, located at 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut. Notice was published twice in, oh, look at this, Connecticut Post, Friday, June 3rd and Friday, June 10th. Lab of no voices.
Here's the timing.
Drew me out. All right, we're good.
All about the timing. Okay, Rick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit One is the draft text amendments dated May 23rd, 2022, revised to 6/16/2022. And we have a referral back from the Noggetuck Valley Council of Government dated June 7th, which finds the proposed amendments to the regulations do not present a regional significance and present no inter municipal impacts. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Rick, you want to go through the?
Yes, the commissioners have the latest revised, dated 5/23 revised 6/16. As the secretary indicated, we have six text amendments. Text amendments. And we will start with one, which involves the completion and permit extensions for excavation filling applications. Article Six, Excavation Filling Application, Section 6.4, Excavation and Filling, Excavation Permit Required. The existing regulations has a completion of five years from the approval date. As the commission is aware, after completing the review and approval of 64 Cambridge Drive, it was brought to the attention that that project will take at least seven years. So in accordance with that, the proposed text amendment reads, "Extension on Limit, Such Excavation and Grading Shall Be Completed Within Five Years of the Approval Date. The Commission May Grant Extensions Not to Exceed an Additional Five Years for a Grand Total of Ten Years." Now, as we had discussed on the existing interpretation, the commission can do increments of one year, two years, or five years. But staff is recommending that we increase the five to a grand total of 10. This is unique because we'll probably never see another situation like this. But you will have the ability to grant it in intervals, and I would, staff would recommend of no less than one year. It doesn't make sense to do six months because it goes by so fast. So staff is recommending up to five additional years for a 10-year period. Next section is 6.4.8, Apple, Two-Year Permit Existing Text and shall be valid for a period of two years. This is the actual permit that you issued. You issued a filling and grading permit, and that expires in two years. Once again, you heard at the public hearing for the commission to consider extending the two-year period. Staff is recommending the following. The commission may grant multiple extensions not to exceed a grand total of 10 years. So that's your call. You can do two years. Once again, staff has drawn up to 10 years because it coincides with the actual project, not to exceed 10 years. So that is that, as staff has indicated, you heard this repeatedly at the public hearings that was before you for the last two-plus years. The next section is Article Six, Supplemental Regulations, Design Standards, Existing Text, Unsuitable Surface Treatments, Gravel, Crust Stone, Asphalt Millings or Similar Shall Not Be Used or Deemed Suitable for Finished Payment Surfaces. The proposed text recommends asphalt millings may be used only when a certificate of origin is submitted confirming origin of material. If you didn't see, this past Tuesday, the town council approved the NSAFE contract for the LEP. I consulted with the LEP consultant on this, and he recommended to the commission to not use the verbiage of clean material. It's just something that you cannot ascertain. There's no way in knowing that. But he did strongly recommend that you get a certificate of origin. And keeping in mind, this is going to be for the whole community, for all activities, doing your driveway, commercial settings, industrial settings, and half park area. So for the small jobs, you know, like a little area on your driveway, you want to do a little turnaround area, the property owner will call staff, and staff will, A, visit the site to make sure it's not next to a regulated area like a water course or wetlands, and also talk to the homeowner to determine the origin of the material. And we will put that in the file so we know where it is coming from. The small activities are as of right. You know, when you do a little turnaround area in your driveway, and our zoning regulations allows that as of right, just like we do for landscaping. So there are certain activities that are as of right.
But I thought we allowed millings in residential anyway.
Our language says no, so we've been saying no.
Language, residential property?
Across the board.
Because when we went through this with the milling.
That was not the intent, Leon.
He said no.
That was not the intent.
But the intent was to leave the residential alone.
But this, we're clarifying it for the record.
Definitely be that way. Right, so what's a certificate of origin? What does that mean?
It's a document from the property owner indicating where the material is coming from.
So you mean where they're buying the material?
Right. Now, as you know, generally speaking, the town provides a lot of source of millings when we mill the roads.
Right.
State of Connecticut, the same thing when they do the state roads. And sometimes they ask the Public Works Department, do you know of a project site? Both town project site or of a commercial project that is going on? So the Public Works Department is aware of the commission's desire to properly allow this, but at the same time to regulate it. So when it comes from the state, obviously, we know where it's coming from. We can document it's coming from Route 25 or Route 84 or whatever the case may be.
Is the town going to produce a specific letter of origin that we can give to the distributor so that he's clear on what type of information is going to be needed?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I asked the LEP, you know, NSAFE, and they are working with staff to come up with something that's general in nature. They don't want it to be onerous, you know, because you can get into two-page documents.
I talked to, you know, a couple of local contractors, and they are thrilled that this is going on, that we're looking at this, but there are also a couple of things that they added where the modern mixture of asphalt is mostly latex-based, not petroleum-based like the old mix. So it's going to be important to almost know the dating of the material and also be able to provide when they need to give this origin or not. Is it going to be specifically to permitted projects?
For the most part, but we still want to know. If it's coming from a brownfield site, obviously, we're going to say, please look for another source. You know, if it's a small area.
Any reputable distributor is not going to be.
Right, for the most part. But we're trying to avoid unnecessary situation for the obvious reason. Because Monroe has a lot of wetlands and water courses, number one. And the whole intent is to protect the natural resources. So I think we can come up with a proper form that's not too onerous. That's reasonable, but at least we can document it in case something should arise, then we can, you know, fall back on that. And like I said, I'm working with the LEP NSAFE. So I think we can move forward, but clearly, we're not here to stop the small jobs. The bigger jobs, obviously, we just, we want to know. And we are aware of one commercial site in town that has used them. They were cited, and they were waiting for tonight's public hearing to occur. So if the commission is to act favorably on this, I can send a letter tomorrow indicating that this is now permitted and to just provide the certificate of origin because they know where the material came from. Okay, the next section, continuing with supplemental regulations, deals with sign permits. Existing texts, no variance shall be granted by the ZPA concerning any sign, as reported to the full commission and subcommittee. This is in direct conflict with the state statutes. The zoning board of appeals has a right to review an application for variances involving signage. So this is something that we are eliminating. I also failed to state in the beginning that a referral was also made to the town attorney to review this. This was, this was brought to the attention several years ago regarding this particular regulation that is inconsistent with state statutes. Architecture Review Board, remember, we talked about that? That we, we make, we allow referrals to go for residential, and that's a violation of the charter. It's got to be all commercial, ARB. And moving on with Section 6.3.3D, as in David, two conditions for variances. So the first part deals with no variance shall be granted for signage. This deals with conditions for variances. And as listed, we have A through E. All of these conditions, although well-intended, are inconsistent with the state statutes. Once again, this was brought to the attention of staff by the town attorney's office. The intent was admirable, but it deals with floodways, natural register of historic places, et cetera. All of these conditions for variances are in our flood hazard ordinance and in the historic district regulations that we have. So it's redundant, but it's inappropriate that we have these in the regulations, just like I said, for the restrictions on signed variances. So those are, all of those sections are requested to be eliminated. Next section is the interior lots. And that deals with Section 3.8, and let me read it. The interior lots, as the commission was told earlier, was eliminated by this body many years ago. It served a purpose. Most towns in the state of Connecticut allow interior lots and regulate them. They regulate the size, they regulate the accessway, sometimes the limitation. As reported to you at the subcommittee level, the police and fire do not have a problem with the length of driveways. They basically said for the commission to use its discretion. And when I read the narrative, you'll see it, there's a provision in here that this commission determines that it's in the best interest of the Town of Monroe. Also, we need to provide standards as to the width of the fee strip. I recently added a provision, there are larger parcels in town that have existing right-of-way, so the commission should have the ability to determine if the right-of-way serves the overall, the interest of the overall development for interior lots. But generally speaking, you want a fee simple, that's land that is part of the real lot. It just prevents issues that you don't want to run in with the neighbors. I have seen it where they've actually put barriers across a right-of-way. They own it, so they felt that they had the right to do it. And that's why a lot of towns try to avoid the right-of-way scenario and just do the fee strip so the property owner has complete control. But there are instances in the Town of Monroe where there are right-of-ways, and you should factor that in when you get an application for a subdivision that has an interior lot. So let's read the narrative. Interior lots, not having the minimum frontage on a street normally required, shall be permitted in all the residences RF1, 2, and 3 districts. Provided that the planning and zoning commission determines that the development of interior lots is in the best interest of the Town of Monroe, that it will allow proper and orderly utilization of land for residential purposes, and that such interior lots comply with the provisions of this paragraph and other applicable municipal ordinances and regulations. There may be a situation where you have a five-acre parcel, and the developer comes in and says, hey, I want to do two interior lots. This commission may say, well, our, wearing your planning hat, may say, we really need to put a through road in here to get to the cul-de-sac that's on the other side. I really don't see a lot of that happening. Because this commission has been pretty good in putting the through roads in where they needed to be and allowing permanent dead-end streets where it made sense. But that's the whole intent of this language, is when you're wearing your planning hat, as planners, will look at the application and determine if a through road should go in or not, and whether or not you would rather see a permanent cul-de-sac. Now, you've already heard from the public works, they don't want to see any more of these spur roads, little dead-end cul-de-sacs. The market loves them because it's a quiet neighborhood, but it's very costly for the town to maintain that. So that's why I believe that the resurrection of interior lots does make sense. The town is mainly built out, but there are pockets of five acres, 10 acres, where it makes sense not to put in a permanent cul-de-sac because it just costs a lot of money for the town to maintain and to allow interior lots. Interior lots will be subject to the following additional requirement, access and frontage. Each interior lots will have frontage on and access to a town street by means of an unobstructed legal exclusive access held in the same ownership as the interior lot. Set accessway called the fee strip, so it'll have a minimum width and frontage. And I reexamine this, and I'm recommending 25 feet. I was using 30 feet as an example. Actually, all you need is 20 feet. The existing right-of-ways are 20 feet. When you pave a driveway, it's 12 feet. So the 25 feet is more than capable. The commission may, however, allow the use of an existing easement having a minimum width of 25 feet on property that provides appropriate vehicular access as determined by the commission. So as I stated before, there are situations where there are existing right-of-ways, and the commission should determine if those existing right-of-ways make sense and to use it as part of the overall development scheme.
Got a question, Rick. Town street, does that mean this can't be done on state roads?
No, state roads too.
Should say that.
Usually it refers that, but I'll put that in.
Okay.
Let's, yeah, let's be all-inclusive. Now, "No more than two abutting accessways shall be separated from another accessway or pair of contiguous accessway by not less than one minimum required lot frontage for a standard lot in said district." This is the design standard. You don't want to have all these back-to-back-to-back interior lots because you don't want the traffic coming out. I mean, look at 25 with all these unnecessary curve cuts. So in a residential area, you don't want all these driveways coming out because it can create, it could be problematic. So that's the intent of that provision. Now, the lot area, we gave this a lot of thought. This interior lot took three subcommittee meetings. I was suggesting that you increase the lot size, but it was the recommendation to hold the normal lot size for the RF1, which is 43,560, RF2, 87,120, and the R3, 130,680. These lot sizes obviously are more than capable of accommodating the house, the septic system. And as I indicated, if you do a fee strip, the fee strip is separate. So all of these lot sizes can clearly accommodate a house, the septic system, and the reserve area. It was the recommendation not to go in excess because generally speaking, going larger is part of our suburban sprawl problem. You're just creating more space, and it's not needed. We know that the health department has dealt correctly with the new septic systems in town, and they provide 100% reserve areas, so that hasn't been an issue. "The limits of the accessway shall be shown on any record map by dashed line, the property lines of an interior lot, which commences at determination of the accessway shall diverge from each other at a angle of not less than 60 degrees." Once again, this involves the design criteria. "The calculated lot area excluding the area contained in the accessway shall be designated on any record map." Now, the next provision is the driveway. "Within the lines of the accessway, there shall be constructed a private driveway with a minimum 12 foot wide, paved, or constructed with the use of asphalt millings." We added asphalt millings. Once again, that is a surface treatment that can be used because you know how millings, especially when they're put down and rolled, it does lock in.
Did you want to put a grade on here as well?
Yes. I do not recommend gravel, because you know what happens with gravels? Even when it's level, gravel's loose. Now, you can use gravel when you use that polymer that locks in, it's different. They use that for decorative driveways. But I think if we go with the paved, the police and the fire did recommend paved for the obvious reason, so they can get the emergency apparatus there. Because, you know, they're looking at all weather conditions. And they want to be able to get in there when they get a 911 call. So the paved or the asphalt millings are two surface treatments that staff believes are appropriate. And "They shall be adequate in thickness to accommodate fire and others similar." All of us have driveways here. They usually go four inches plus now, and then they roll it. When you do a town road, it's a different standard, but that's also excessive because you've got heavier vehicles using it. Where two accessways are contiguous, one driveway, so this is where you have two interior lots side by side, and they want to do a common driveway. "Said driveway shall not be less than 12 feet in width." That's a standard driveway width that can accommodate a car, and you can have a car pass. You know, I have a 12-foot wide driveway. It gets tight when you have two SUVs. But what I added in there is that the, you add gravel shoulders to equal 18 feet. So you have 12 feet of paved driveway or millings. And then you have three feet of packed process aggregate. Because when you do a driveway, you put down process aggregate. That is three-quarter inch gravel with stone dust. So generally speaking, when you're doing a driveway, they go out six or eight inches, but we're asking them to go out enough to accommodate 18 feet total. That will accommodate, if you have a shared driveway, cars that have to pass. Our SUVs didn't get smaller, they got bigger. I just, my Ford Explorer got bigger. My 2018 is bigger than the 2010. It gets better gas mileage, but it is wider. So, and these are standards that the police and fire recommend too. "Setbacks on any interior, no buildings or other structures, shall extend less than 10 feet." Setback. The only thing when you go with a larger-sized lot that I was recommending earlier on is that you can go with a higher setback, you know, like 40 feet, 50 feet. But the subcommittee said, you know, our setbacks are fine. If you want to have livestock or a rooster, you know, a rooster, you've got to have a larger setback. You're inclined to buy a larger lot. So the interior lot, the whole purpose is to have the quietness that normally goes along with the interior lot setting. It's not, it's not for poultry or for livestock. You usually get a bigger lot. And then the number of interior lots, once again, this is a planning standard because you don't want the whole subdivision to contain interior lots. Aesthetically, it doesn't look good, and it doesn't function correctly. Not to exceed 15% of the total lots. Once again, if you look at the townwide map, there's not a lot of availability. The town is pretty much built out, but there are small pockets of five acres and a couple 10 acres. But, I mean, you all know, because you've all been looking at the maps recently with all the zone changes we've been having and with the affordable housing. So, and then the last is the subdivision regulation. The subdivision regulations have to refer to interior lots. The subdivision regulations have to refer to interior lots. And we're adding new language that reads "interior lots." Number C, not having the minimum frontage on a street normally we committed in residents RF1, RF2, and RF3. And then it refers back to Section 3.8 of the zoning regulations. So, the subdivision regulations has to acknowledge that you're allowing the interior lot as a decision when you do a subdivision. So, Mr. Chairman, these are all the text amendments.
Let's go on to the public hearing section, see if anybody needs. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on the proposals, the amendments that we just presented? Any members of the public would like to comment on these proposals? Hearing none? Thank you, Austin. Would you like to comment on these proposals?
Just briefly, if I may.
Okay, please just name and address for the record.
Attorney Green of the Law Offices in Cleveland, Groves. It's my pleasure to be here before you this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis, trustee, as you're aware, is the owner of property on Timothy Hill Road. Just a few comments. I, can you just clarify what the process would be on this text? Is that, is this going to be?
To approve it?
Tonight?
Yeah, well, we'll deliberate after we close it.
Okay.
And then approve it possibly tonight.
On 6.4.8A, which is on the second page, let me hand out. Is my understanding correct that where it refers to two-year permits, that refers to fill permits, correct?
It's correct.
And is my correct language really, might be, "Commission may grant multiple two-year extensions not to exceed a grand total of 10?"
Yes.
Would the language be added to be "may grant multiple two-year extensions"?
Yes. That's what it says there on the red, I believe.
Right now, it says "may grant multiple..."
Two-year extensions, no. Attorney Green is correcting the clarification.
And in terms of the, so, and is there any text on what the requirement is for extensions and what the burden would be on an applicant in granting extensions and how that's done?
It's solely up to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, there'd be, but there would be some sort of a process?
Oh, absolutely, process, right.
And would it be akin to the request for an extension would be the requirements for the extension? How are they?
No, it'd be a line item on the agenda.
Okay, and would it just be a letter, or would it be a?
To initiate it, it'd be a letter from the property owner or applicant.
Okay. Because I will say that some towns require something akin to a reapplication on some form of simplified application. But the commission has some sort of standard in understanding sort of why the extension's being permitted, what the level of progress is, and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And if you don't have those kinds of standards in your regulation, then it gets sort of arbitrary, and sometimes you're not presented with the information that you need to make an educated decision on.
Yeah. This commission, as you know, has talked about this situation in great depth. The commission can either reject it, and you would give your reasonings behind it. And conversely, if the extension's going to be granted, you're going to impose the normal conditions that go with it, including the continuation of the bond. And if there has been any issue, let's say with sediment erosion control, you may include a provision along those lines to direct staff to make sure that they're maintained properly. So, the commission will fall back on, you know, the standards that allow them to grant the permit.
The other comment I was going to offer was that, the other comment I was going to offer is regarding the use of asphalt millings. You don't have any standards on, while you have a certificate of origin. One of the things I was going to speak to the commission about on another application is that, I'm sorry, on one of the other revisions is, one of the big themes that arises out of a case that actually began in this town, which is the Mackenzie decision for Route 25. And that case really deals with the need to have standards in your regulations, where you can't just say that the commission may make, sort of make judgments. Generally, the law favors having, for example, your setback numbers, your height numbers, and objective standards and quantities, measurable things that the commission can impose. That's generally what the law requires. And it doesn't allow this commission, on a case-by-case basis, to make decisions on various applications. And I'm sure you can understand that logic. So, even, so this just says that it's going to provide a certificate of origin. So, the problem you're going to run into is you're going to get into arguments about, with an applicant who's going to march in and say, "Here's my certificate of origin." And you're going to say, "Well, some of us are unhappy with the place of origin where the certificate comes from." The applicant's going to look at you and say, "All I have to do is submit a certificate of origin, and here it is." So, you might add language that speaks to the suitability of the millings. You don't have that in the proposed regulations. So I'm just offering that for your thought.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that, I had a lengthy discussion with the LEP. And he said, "Please advise your commission," and this goes along the lines of Attorney Green here. If you open the door for the standards, it's going to turn into a very, very lengthy standard. And he didn't feel comfortable recommending that to the commission, considering the application of this. Obviously, staff is going to be reviewing it, and we are extremely sensitive to the origin of materials, obviously.
But I could see his point, too.
No, and conversely. I could see that if we don't have it that where this commission can make a decision, that we can deny where this asphalt's coming from, then I think we could have a problem. I could see his point, because I could see that this just says "certificate of origin." It doesn't mean, you know, once they give it to us, they say, "We gave that to you."
Here's my certificate.
Right, and then they could walk away.
And there's also, does it mean automatically?
And it says it came out of New York, and we have no clue what it was, then we would have to say that this is something that we don't want to accept. Can't we put some kind of language in like that?
Yeah, commission can reject.
Discretionary.
Yeah.
So, again, we're running into that issue. There's got to be some standard.
Yeah, there has to be. What are our bases for rejecting it?
That's a big point. Yeah, now we get, now.
Like you mentioned, this can become very lengthy.
He said that, he goes, "You can go down two avenues." To be concise, and we can add more wording tonight about your ability to reject it based on the circumstances or to get involved with real detail.
The language in that, that we don't have to accept it?
No, you.
I mean, I'm saying that if it needs to, well, that's like he's saying. Now, if it meets the commission's standards, then we'd have to have some kind of standard.
Yeah, it's the standards, you know?
That's what I'm saying, so.
Openness of sustainability issues.
It's going to have to look at that.
Certainly, this commission's going to have a discussion during your deliberations. But I will tell you that as this is written as a lawyer, I'm going to march in with my certificate of origin. And the plain language of this says that may be used only when a certificate of origin is submitted, confirming origin of material. I'm going to give you the origin of my material, and then I'm going to demand the right to use the millings. And you're going to say, "Well, we don't like where it came from." And I'm going to say, "Well, that's not what your regulation says." So I'm just going to throw that out for your thought. And while it may be a complex discussion, if you're going to go down the road of asphalt millings, and I've spent a considerable amount of time on asphalt millings, and I won't take up your time on it, but I can.
Are there standards that are enumerated by other?
There's a lot of writing on it, and the DEP was going to.
Was going to.
Was going to announce, they were going to have a policy on it, but they ran out of manpower, ran out of time, and ran out of money, and they haven't done it yet. So, there's a lot to it, as you can imagine, because a lot of these millings come from roads that have existed for 40 years and state roads that have had trucks. I had a case personally with someone with filled wetlands, completely surrounding wetlands with asphalt millings. And it got very, very tacky, very, it's a mess. So, I'm just throwing that out for you to think about, and I would be hesitant for you to simply pass a blanket regulation that just says, "You give me the certificate, I get it." So, I'll throw that out. And then the other thing I wanted to just, and I'm not so, this is not really my issue, and I'm obviously interested in the sort of impacts on my client's property, but just for your thought on your interior lot regulations, as you think about adopting that. This language that talks about where the commission finds that it's in the best interest of the town to allow individual interior lots, that is going to be the same problem as you had in the Mackenzie case. And that is, there's nothing that sort of, that allows this commission on a case-by-case basis to sort of say, "This is in the best interest of the town, this isn't."
But doesn't that go without saying, though, Rick?
Absolutely, it could be eliminated.
Yeah, eliminate that, Rick.
Yeah, and really, what you want to have is, if you have the right-of-way of XP, if you have a driveway that can support vehicles, if you have gravel or use asphalt, if it's this length, this width, and those sorts of things, then it's allowed. And that makes your job so much easier.
Property, proper and orderly utilization, that's.
So, I'm just throwing these thoughts out, but I would be very.
Eliminate.
I would be very cautious, although I understand.
Is it in the best interest of the town, though? Eliminate that.
Well, I understand that it's a complex discussion. It'll be a lot less complex for you to adopt these standards now than later when you're trying to convince some developer who comes in with a massive project with asphalt millings that their certificate is in and of itself not good enough. So, thank you for your.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion now on the millings? We could add language that, that, "As the commission may reject the CEO, the certificate of origin based on recommendations by the Health Department or other environmental agency." Other environmental, it could be deep, because towns ask for their assistance. But it's good to use our local health department, because they will refer to the public, to the Public Health Department and deep. So you want to at least go along that.
What reason would the health department have to reject it?
Oh, because of the analysis of it, of the millings.
We're not requiring an analysis.
So now they're going to go and get an analysis?
I would consult your town attorney. Delegating your authority to other departments, that's a problem, too.
All right, okay, thank you. At this point, let's close the public hearing, and then we can deliberate on the language.
Well, anybody online want to talk?
Yeah, anybody.
We'll find out. I was going to ask one more time. Thank you, Mr. Green. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the draft text amendments? Any other members of the public here tonight?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please identify yourself, name and address?
Yes, Pete Metropolis. You were just hearing from Joel Green, my attorney. I just had a quick point of reference for, are you including millings to be used as fill? For, say, 64 Cambridge?
Absolutely, asphalt's prohibited.
Okay, because, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I've delivered to the town of Monroe several occasions where Brownsfield site's asphalt from a Brownsfield site was deposited at 64. So I just wanted to be sure, we're talking about roads only?
Yep.
Yes.
Driveways and parking lots, that's it, no fill.
Gotcha, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Once again, any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application before us? Any other members of public? Hearing none, then we'll close this application, close this hearing. All right, moving along, now that we've closed the hearing, let's open it again.
Deliberations.
Deliberations, both subdivisionsay and site development plans, we have none. Next on the agenda, de-delibrations and determinations. We can go ahead, we can deliberate on these amendments. So as I hear it, I think the main issue is going, is the certificate of origin on asphalt millings. So as Rick stated, the one thing we have to decide tonight is, is this enough to be general, in general terms? Or do we want to be specific and start saying that, "Well, there can't be any lead in the millings"?
Yeah, but then you got to, but then, but then, they all got to be tested.
Yep, so there's the decision.
But then, I understand that, that makes a decision on that. But then, like I said to you before, we allowed residents to use milling.
We always have, yeah.
Always have. And so, now you're going to have to go, it's, we got to come up with some kind of standard here. I mean, I can understand that you're saying testing and all that kind of stuff and stuff like that. We got to come up with a standard somewhere. Somebody's got to have some kind of standard. I mean, I'm sure other towns allow this to be used. What kind of, what are their standards?
Yeah, a lot of them don't address it.
In other towns.
They don't address it in detail.
They leave it like this.
Or it's just a policy of the department to allow it on a case-by-case basis.
Without certificate of origin. So we've added the certificate of origins to give us a little bit more leeway or?
Well, the other thing is, is you have the certificate of origin here, and like Attorney Green was just saying there, that, so that somebody shows up with that, then they're saying, "Well, here it is." You're saying now, if we say millings under discretion of the commission, if you can use them or if you can't use them on certain projects or not, we may ask the person that's coming in, "And where did they come from?" And I don't think that maybe we'd get in trouble that way.
Well, this is to let them know upfront that we're going to be looking at where they're coming from.
No, but I'm saying, what do you say, if you say, the way you have it written here, if somebody, like he just said, somebody shows up here and say, "Okay, listen, here's my certificate of origin, I got these from New York City." And you say, "Okay, well, we don't want it now." Right? And our regulation says, asphalt millings may be used with certificate of origin. And so, it's like, what are you saying? If you bring it here and you say, "Well, here it is", there's, you know, somebody takes us to court, and say, "Well, they only asked us for a certificate of origin."
The writing's got to get cleaned up. I mean, if you want to even go further down the road on this, you could start having the distributor of the millings have to manifest where they came from, from the street, if you want to go even further with it. Because how are you going to believe the distributor at that point?
You don't know that.
So, there has to be a certain level of trust.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but the thing is, is like, do you put this in here? Or how does other towns handle? I'm sure that there's other towns that handle this different ways. I mean, there's got to be. But I'm saying, like, I can understand the point.
We're voting on it now, though. We're deliberating now.
We're deliberating, and what, we don't have to, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it.
You can skip on this provision.
Skip and move along.
I thought it was an entire.
Well, no, it's not the entire, you can.
Difference, I mean.
Just want to make sure we didn't have to vote on the whole thing altogether.
Well, I don't, I mean, the thing is, is that, well, I mean, if we do it tonight, or if we do it next, two weeks from now, it really makes a difference. But I mean, we're working on it right now. We don't have to finish this whole thing tonight. There's no way that we're, that, because this is one part, and I have just a couple other questions here on these other parts here, just to make sure that we're on the same page here.
Well, let's stick to this part.
Right, but I'm saying, we have to come up with some kind of standard. So, that either we remove the certificate of origin somehow and put it that it's up to the commission to make a decision if that use should be okay to use on this property. And then we just say, "Well, we need to see where this came from." then we can say, well, we need to see where this came from and this and this and that. And then we'll decide if we want you to use that on the property. If not, you got to pave the property.
The, the L E P basically said that.
What, who is the L E P?
Oh, Rob.
Rob.
From EnSafe.
That's who he's talking to, my man.
Our, our contract with EnSafe.
For Cambridge.
Yeah. Remember Rob? He, he went over everything. And he basically suggested you, you can go very gingerly and not get involved.
Yeah, you can be general or specific.
And he didn't have to decide now. He didn't have a problem with the certificate of origin because it's, that's, no, I had a common practice. Now, the only department in town hall that could assist the commission and staff is the health department. So that's why I throw that out if you want to bring that in, especially.
Health department is going to have much to say about it. I mean, the sanitarium.
Yeah, what's he going to have to do?
No, the, no.
I would leave the other department.
No, the director of health would refer.
What if we just change the language so it says asphalt millings can be, maybe, hold on. Asphalt millings can be used at the discretion of.
Staff or.
Staff or the commission upon review of a certificate of origin. So it, it first that they have to give us the certificate. It infers that we have to look through it and review it and then we get to make a decision. As opposed to, here's the, here it is, we're good. Put in there that it's going to be reviewed by staff or the commission, depending on what the project might be. And if we look at it and it's all lead, well, okay, well, we're, we reviewed it and we've decided, no, this isn't going to work.
And conversely, you'll have a two-page document with standards.
Yeah.
Because that's what Rob, that's what Rob suggested.
I think that, I think changing the wording like.
Standards is going to be a two-page document.
Oh, right. Right. But where's that? Do you have that document?
No, he just said, he's not recommending that.
It'll require testing then.
No, I don't think, I don't want to get that, I don't want to get that.
I think, I think wording it that way, because you're, you're going to be like, oh, it came from the asbestos filled town. Like, you know, once you see that, you make the decision.
When you get certificate of origin, the area or the place where material is coming from, can they certify that it's clean or not?
Howard, what's the definition of?
No.
Now, right.
Oh, you keep, that's, yeah. Yeah. Rob says you can't get into the certification.
It gets into two.
You can certify that it's clean fill.
Right.
No.
This means asphalt. It doesn't break asphalt down.
The chairman, that's, that's what's problematic. The state of Connecticut hasn't provided the guidelines yet.
Okay.
And the state themselves use millings on their own property?
Absolutely.
Well, can we, can we get like the town's attorney to look at, to give us some kind of a definition here that's going to cover us?
This is something that we really needed to consult with our L E P consultant.
And you did. And he gave us, and then L E P stands for what again, for the record?
Licensed environmental professional.
Okay. So, and he said to do it this way. What's our concern of not doing it this way? That we're going to get millings that are going to be, no, 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 no. The wording, the wording, yes. But what's our concerns about not knowing where the millings were coming from? What are we fearing there?
Well, like if the roads were, if it come off a road that's never been developed and they grind the, grind the road up and that road's been there for 50 years and all of a sudden they grind it up, it's going to have more lead in it. It's going to have, because back then.
Has lead.
They used leaded gasoline back then. So those roads are going to have lead in it. So that's why we're, years ago, we discussed this. We had a big thing about.
So that's why we would want a certificate of origin.
Well, where it came from. And there's no way of us to research how many times that road's been repaved anymore. It's not, really it's not.
My point is if our, if our concern's protecting the environment, somebody whose job it is to protect the environment, in a sense, or have an idea of that, told us that this was okay, I understand that.
And that's a part of.
Not great. He might not be somebody that can speak to us on language though. And it's language, I think, that needs to be changed.
Not helping us at the local level with the lack of standards.
And not the, not the material. So I don't think we need to remove or, you know, the certificate of origin or add a, you know, breakdown of what it's like composed of. I think we can use this and it's just coming up with the proper language so we don't put us ourselves in a leave a hole of this piece of paper equals I can do whatever I want when I, as long as I hand it to you, which is what I believe Attorney Green was pointing at, not necessarily saying this should completely be thrown.
Well, I, I'm a firm believer that we need to come up with kind, some kind of standard that we're, we can deny if we don't want to use it.
I think the language that Ryan discussed.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Is that legal? Is it okay? Use that kind of language?
Absolutely.
That's the language within our zoning.
All right. So what is that then, Rick, that you would like to change this to?
Yeah, let's.
Maybe asphalt millings may be considered, or use of asphalt millings may be considered by staff or the commission upon the review of the certificate of origin to be submitted by the applicant. Right?
It's open ended. You're not giving them anything.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Bad.
It's bad? What do you mean?
You're not giving them anything. You're, you're saying that you're going to review everything that you don't have any rights to use it.
Well, no, they have a right to use it as long as we make sure that it's coming from a.
The operative word is we.
Not shell.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not using shell.
Guaranteeing. Yeah, we're not locking them in.
We're going to, yeah, but we could say that, I can understand what you're saying. It says may.
Yeah.
May.
I don't anticipate.
Doesn't mean that.
Problem because we're bringing in Cambridge and that's a.
Shell.
Not allowing any asphalt.
Discretion.
Yes, that's the point. I mean, we're a board.
If for some reason that we decide that it's not the right place to use it, or if there's, well, basically, we're not saying that.
No.
You know, that's the right place to use it. We're just basically saying that now we're going to review the certificate of origin or he's going to review that and he's going to say, well, this didn't come from a good place. But we have a, I think this commission has the right then, well, as we word it the right way, we word it, we have to make sure we word it the right way, that we can deny it.
Yes.
Just on just saying, not, not getting into court thing, but we have the right to say that we can use it or we can't use it. But I don't think that we could say, well, I imagine we would have to add other stuff to it, like the certificate of origin and put something else in there because, I mean, you're going to say, well, what was wrong with my certificate of origin that the commission denied?
We researched this.
Where you tell them from and, and it's unfavorable.
Came from a site that we, we don't.
Do you want to add another sentence? The commission may solicit.
I don't think.
From outside agency, you know?
How far you.
I don't know. I don't want to go, I don't want to get too deep into it, but I want to make sure.
We don't want to wrap it in red tape.
No, I don't want to wrap it in red tape and I want to be able to just say that we're going to use it or we're not going to use it. We're not happy with it and we can just blow it out.
Well, and then they're going to ask why and we're going to say we didn't like where it came from. Find another place.
Right. So we can leave the language the same. The only problem might be in a court case down the road if they want to be belligerent and.
Yeah, if it's rejected.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. So I think we should, I think somebody should write the language. At least let.
Use contaminated.
It won't get that far. They won't want to draw attention.
And it's not like we've stopped somebody from using it either. There's going to be a good reason.
I mean, do we have legal look at every other zoning change we do? We write these all the time. That's our job.
Although this was referred to town attorney.
So the town attorney already looked through this?
Yeah, there's no comments as of today.
So he already looked at how it was written and had no issue? And now we're looking to change it because we're concerned there's legal issue?
You know, in all due respect, you know, got to rely on the experts, the L E Ps and that's what.
Don't forget, this is going right across into the regular homeowner too, you know?
Yeah, it does. And that's what I'm saying. It's like, you know, I, I don't want to make it too hard on a homeowner that already uses. I mean, I don't know how it got changed from homeowners ever using asphalt millings because the reg, when we discussed this, when we eliminated it, we wanted to make sure that, that the residents were never touched on the asphalt, right? Am I right about that? Because we went.
And it didn't.
What year was it? How long ago was that?
That was home on base. That was.
Nobody can work out.
No, but I mean, this is part of the regulations. We changed it and not allow that. We should allow asphalt.
Let's move along. The other, yeah, and we're going to add may grant multiple two-year extensions to 6.4.8A under two-year extensions.
Yeah. So let me ask you a question on that. I just want to get into this anyway. It's valid for two years, right?
Yeah.
Then it's a year permit.
Two years. It's valid for two years. So the reason why that is in there is because we didn't want big piles left.
Didn't want the duration, right?
We didn't want, we didn't want to see big mounds left all over the place.
Finish the job.
Finish the job or, or the ground has to be leveled. So we, you want to extend it to 10 years.
That coincides with the project that we have.
No, I got all that. I, I understand that. But I'm saying.
And it's may, you know?
What we change in here, I got, I got to understand that, where I understand about the project we're dealing with. But when we change this, we change it for the whole town.
Absolutely.
It's for everybody. It's not just for that.
You use your discretion.
It's actually a case by case. I got all that and I have that. But there's nothing to say that us, that we can close this, right?
Well, if nothing is done in two years, if that pile's still sitting there, we can then say, no, this.
Yeah, you have complete discretion on that.
Same as a bond extension or a.
Yes.
Site plan extension. We need to change the language.
But the reason why this was put in here, I believe, was so that this project was finished. Not that, not that project. I understand that's never going to get finished that way. Any, any project would be so that there wasn't all these big mounds left all over the town. That's why this was put in here, so that this could be closed and be done with. You know what I mean? So.
What's your question then?
My question is, I, I want to, well, I'm saying is I.
He wants clarification on that.
Yeah.
I didn't ask the question.
I want like, I want to make sure that we can extend it and we can only extend it for a certain reason. And, and the reason would have to be something, right? You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
But I'm saying to you, no, I understand. They're going to say, come in here and they're going to say we want an extension, like he's saying for a bond extension. They're not going to come in here and give us any reason why they want.
Yeah, they do.
Well, they said, or they just send a letter.
Unless we put it into standards.
They have to give us a reason why they want to extend.
Yeah. I can add more language upon determination by the commission.
But that's fine.
But they don't have to come in front of us. That's not what this.
Oh, no, 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 I understand it. No, they don't have.
No, a letter comes in front of them. They don't have to physically come out here. Just want to make sure we're aware of that.
It's an administrative action.
Well, I got all that. What I'm saying to you is that, and I'm, I'm saying, I know why this is here and I know, I know what, what the intent is. But I'm saying to you, this regulation goes through the whole town.
Absolutely.
So I don't want this to turn into where somebody says, okay, well, we want to get an extension. We, we started digging this or they went and dug a big hole, gravel out of it, sold it, and now they're trying to.
You would look back. Would deny that request and say, finish it or we're going to call you bond.
I got that. But I'm saying, we have to have some kind of language in here for reasoning why it needs to be extended. I would say that that's the best way to do this. Just put some kind of language in there to say, you have to have a good.
Yeah, upon determination by the commission.
Or something like that. Yeah, that's fine.
At the same time, it's to the town benefit and our benefit to make them finish, give them an extension, leave it like.
Well, that's, that's true. But I'm saying, if for some reason there was a hardship that they couldn't get this done, or because of the material that they're doing, or whatever it is, I want the commission to say, listen, you had two years to do this project. You dug a big hole, but yet you've done nothing.
And it's on record for the next time they ask for an extension.
Right. And I'm saying to you, what I'm saying is that we have to have some kind of discretion that where we're going to say, you're not going to be able to do this anymore because you didn't do this, this or this. You know what I mean? And so I think. The reasoning, right. And that would be the best way to do it.
Language?
Yep.
And we made sure that it's going to say the commission may grant two-year extensions not to exceed a grand total of 10 years? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? None?
Wait, hold on. Which, I think, well, I think pretty much, I just want to add some stuff to it. I mean, I'm just, the same thing with, well, I don't know. I, I don't think there's going to be a problem with this, but the extension for excavation grading shall be completed within five years of the approval day. And the thing is, the same thing, Rick, just put some kind of language in there that says that if it's, if it's, and it's going to meet our criteria, and we know what it's here for, but I don't want this to turn out to be another problem that I, that we're already having. That, I don't want to even discuss that tonight, but we're already having another problem that we need to, to address. And so. And this is not, but this could turn in for them to do this too. And, and you know what I'm talking about. So I don't want to get into that right tonight. So, but anyways, just add some language to that and I'll be happy with it too.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I think I'm good.
All right. So now are we good with, well, we have a draft.
Maybe we just wait till we get the new draft and then do our official vote.
That's what I think we should do. All right.
It seems like we.
So in favor of moving forward with this, with the changes that we discussed?
Yes.
You know, the interior lot, I wanted to talk about one thing here.
One more thing. It's like I haven't used any.
Eight point.
Three point grade.
I wanted to add the grade for the driveways.
Yeah.
Because we don't want them washing off into a drive over on our motorcycle and.
Did you get that?
Add the grade. And add the state road on eight, three, one.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Just so. The grade.
Rob, I'm going to go with 10 percent.
Ten?
That's the standard.
Yeah. And don't forget to add state roads just so somebody doesn't come in front of us trying to do an interior lot off 111 and someone says, nope, it's town roads only.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments or additions or?
Rob, anything else?
Are we going to fix the lettering? I brought it up last time.
Mike, one more.
And it didn't get fixed.
Okay. Then we're going to end the deliberations here. We have a new application.
Okay, we have received a new application for grading. This is the second lap to the lap. This is the second, the last lot on 25, right before you enter Newtown. It's heavily treed.
On the right.
On the left.
On the left. Not, not on that. Not the property we discussed recently. Okay.
And they have been actively looking for development for it. And everyone goes, we can't envision what it looks like. You need to regrade it. And that's exactly.
That property's already been touched?
No.
They've been taking stuff out of there. They're clearing it.
I'm not aware of that then.
That, that property hasn't been touched?
They've had trees coming down because I've been by their end. I've seen it.
I think that property's been touched.
I got to take a look at it and you'll be responsible. So what do we do? We're going to have a public hearing, yeah, at the. Where's the calendar on there? Ryan, do you have the July meeting date? July 4th? Not July 4th.
I won't be here.
No one will be here.
Uh, July 7th and.
July 7th. This is, this will be on the July 7th meeting.
Do we want to vote on the minutes?
Yes. I wasn't here, so.
Other business pending meeting minutes. Everyone have the copy of.
June 2nd, regular meeting minutes. Need a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept. I'll second. Minutes as crafted for June 2nd.
Motion for June 2nd minutes and I have a second. Is there any discussion?
Not all.
Voting on my right.